It is Monday, August 24th, and I'll call our meeting of the Millville Planning Board to order. We have tonight with us myself and Chris Drew and Justin Allen, as well as Sarah Adams from CMRBC, who's filling in as our town planner for right now. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at the minutes that Sarah sent over to everyone the other day?
Yeah, there was only one little comment I had just on the second page, second line down. It says "stay" instead of "say." That was my only, only that I noticed. But outside of that, I mean, they were fine.
All right. Here, a motion to accept the minutes with that minor change?
Make a motion to accept with the minor change
I will.
For the 10th of August.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. Sarah, you want to get us up to speed on the folks that we have with us tonight? And what it is that we're going to be doing this evening?
Sure thing. So the first thing we have on the agenda, and I think that I see everyone here already, is the preliminary subdivision review for Alfonso Heights. So I think I see Peter and Kevin from TEC, who did the peer review on, and hopefully you all had a chance to take a look at the peer review memo that they had prepared. And also Bob Poxon is representing the applicant. And it looks like Tina Alfonso is on as well. I'm not sure if there's anyone else on that is representing this application, but I would like to turn it over to Bob or the applicant to explain what the project is. And then I think we can dive into the review findings.
Hey, thank you. Is my mic on? I was making sure.
We can hear you.
Okay. So the project is located on the eastally side of Chestnut Hill Road. And it's 403,489 square feet in property with over 400 feet of frontage. And the applicant, we, the applicant was originally sought a variance from the ZBA to allow just three fronted lots and not have to go the subdivision route, but he was turned down by the ZBA for the variance for reduced frontage. So what we're proposing is a five lot preliminary plan right now. We have a roadway that's about a dead end cul-de-sac that's 500 feet long. We got some wetlands that we have a small wetland crossing. But generally, we are proposing five lots. Only one of them would be the actual normal sized lot of a 40,000 square foot. The others are well in excess of an acre. One of them is in excess of three acres because of the amount of wetlands that are on it. But there's plenty of building area on all these lots. And as I say, it's a preliminary, it's a preliminary plan. Just seeking input from the board and from, you know, so to allow us to proceed with definitive.
Perfect. And I know we did send that out for a peer review. And I think Sarah mentioned we have the folks on the call from TEC.
Yeah, hi. My name's Peter Ellison. I'm a civil engineer with TEC. And also on the call with me is Kevin DeAndrea. He's the Worcester Regional Director, the director of our Worcester office. So we did perform a peer review of the project. In general, our peer reviews at the, you know, the first phase of the subdivision, the preliminary plans, it's more big picture. The layout of the lots, trying to look at access from the proposed driveway, seeing if the location makes sense, things of that nature. Not necessarily diving into heavy details because we would expect to do that at the definitive stage. But if the board would like, I can either provide a quick summary of our letter and hit the highlights, or I can go through each comment, whatever the board would prefer.
Think, I think the summary was probably the best, and then we can kind of ask some questions.
Sure. All right. So in general, what's being proposed is a five lot subdivision in the village residential district. The plan was a bit vague in that it didn't show exactly where the houses were going to be located or call them out as single family or multi-family houses. So that's something that the applicant would be able to clarify probably pretty easily. As drawn, we do believe that the lot layouts meet and conform to the zoning bylaw requirements for both frontage and minimum lot area. We did ask them to shift the 80 by 100 zoning rectangle on a couple of lots because we believe that the frontage should be generated from the new roadway that they're proposing and not accessed via Chestnut Hill Road. The applicant, I guess noted this in their presentation, but there are some wetland resources at the site. So it would require a crossing of some kind, either a culvert or a small open bottom bridge structure in order to access, I believe, four of the lots would be on the opposite side of that wetland crossing. So a couple of comments in that regard. They would be required to file an NOI or notice of intent with conservation at the time that they do get into a definitive filing. And then also, while reviewing the zoning bylaw, we noted that there is an open space residential district option in your zoning bylaw. So in other communities, this would be a perfect fit for that type of development. So we did make our comment that they may want to explore that, which they could limit the overall impact of development and the footprint of the development while still getting the same number of lots at the site. Lot one on the plan would be, I think, with the current layout, would be, I think, impossible to access based on the local conservation regulations. I'm not 100% sure, but they are showing a 50-foot notice of zone. So I don't know how they would be able to get a driveway into lot one in order to create, you know, a house on that lot. And then finally, we looked at the intersection and stopping site distance at the location of the proposed roadway. And generally, we believe that they would be able to build this in conformance with modern guidance from Ashdod for both sightlines knowing stopping site distance. And based on the number of lots being five, we do not think that going forward there would be any requirement for a formal traffic study because it would just be such a low volume of trips being generated. The subdivision control rules and regulations section is of my letter is really just looking for more detail as we get into the definitive plans. So some of the things that I think the applicant should keep in mind moving forward. I don't necessarily know, we need to get into any of those in detail right now. And then finally, as far as the stormwater management site for the site goes, they would be disturbing over an acre. So they would develop a SWIP, a stormwater pollution prevention plan for the site and file a notice of intent with EPA in order to be in conformance with the current regulations. And then also, they would need to conform with the Millville stormwater management regulations. So with that being said, I'll turn it back over to the board, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Sarah, did you have any other questions that you wanted to ask of the applicant before we ask some questions?
No, I don't believe so. I think that TEC's letter covered a lot of the comments that I had had around wetlands issues. So those were kind of my big concerns. So I think, any questions that the board has?
Perfect. Chris, Justin, do you guys have questions?
Yes, with lot one, maybe it's not really a question for TEC and more the proponent, but what would be the, with that 50-foot wetlands that they can't cross, what would be the solution to get onto lot one?
Well, we would just, we would just adjust, either adjust the road coming in where the entrance is to allow us to have a more of a developable area at the, at the, at the intersection with Chestnut Street. Maybe turn, you know, and face the house against the new, put the house facing the new roadway and then adjust the lot line between four and five. And we would just mean, it'd just mean adjusting lot lines. We can make it work.
Okay.
And TEC brought up that we, wasn't indicated on the plan what type of homes you were looking to put in here? Is it single family homes?
We really haven't, I really haven't discussed it with the applicant. But I mean, I originally thought was single family homes. But if the zoning allows duplexes, that may be something that we might be considering when we get to the definitive stage. I mean, some of these lots are a good size, big, you know, big enough to maybe support a duplex with the area. But here again, we, I don't know what the, we didn't really look into what the zoning allowed. I was, we intend was single family at the beginning, but it could change when we get to the definitive stage.
Justin, did you have any questions?
I actually have a question of just the process. What is the next step after the peer review?
I can tell you typically what we see in other communities would be a response letter responding to TEC comments from the applicant. And then it would be up to the board whether you would want TEC to, you know, respond to that letter in kind or if you're comfortable with how the responses are stated, you could approve the preliminary plan and move on to the definitive stage at that point.
Right. And I'll just flag for Millville's side of things, the definitive plan would, you know, require a public hearing process. So we would advertise that the same way we would for a special permit. So that would come with that application. We would get that ad in the paper 14 days before. And that would be a public hearing that a butters would get notified and could come and make comments as well.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant or for TEC right now?
Nope.
Does the applicant have any questions? Having gone through the comments that TEC provided, and if you're planning to put together a response, that's great. But anything you want to address that was in here already?
Well, we haven't, I have not seen TEC's comments. Nothing was forwarded to me as of this afternoon. So I would definitely prepare a response if that's the way the board wants to go with it. I mean, generally, this is a preliminary plan. It doesn't require approval by the board. It's just to solicit these kind of comments so that we know what to do when we prepare the definitive. But yeah, no, I would, I have no problem addressing the comments so that the board would have some idea as to how we propose to proceed. And then we would just seek to proceed with definitive once the board makes its ruling.
Perfect.
Yeah, and I apologize, Bob. I had omitted you on the email that went out with the letter, but I just, I sent it to you at the start of this hearing. So it should be in your inbox. If you did want to prepare a response, you should have that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think seeing, seeing the response to some of these items, I think would be obviously very helpful for us. So we would look forward to seeing that.
I will definitely prepare a response.
Thank you. Sarah, is there anything else that we need to do at this time?
Nope. So the next step will just be, when we see those responses, we'll have them. And then we'll just have to make sure when the definitive application comes through, we'll just check to make sure that all of those comments were addressed.
Great, thank you. Perfect. So thank you. We'll get, make sure that you have all of that information, Bob, and we'll look forward to seeing the response. And thank you so much, Peter and Kevin, for putting that response together. And we'll loop you in when we hear something.
So is the hearing going to be continued, closed? What is, what's the action?
Sarah, was this posted as a public hearing?
No, so this is actually not a hearing. This is just a business meeting of the planning board. So we don't need to formally close anything. Hearing doesn't come in until the definitive plan.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
And I just want to say thank you, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, members of the board, for the opportunity to work for Millville.
Thank you.
One more question. Would it, when I get the comments, would it be okay to contact TEC directly to discuss some of their comments with them? Do I have permission from the board to do that? Since the applicant is paying their peer review fee?
I mean, does that sounds fine with me? Sarah, is that standard?
Yeah, that, I think that's pretty standard. I don't see any issues with, with, sorry, excuse me, with that, especially as someone who had previously worked at an engineering firm. That's typically how we did things.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Have a great evening and be safe.
Thanks.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you. Okay.
Right. Sarah, do you want to update us on the Veterans Memorial Park Plan?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I have much of an update on this one. I had put it on the agenda based on what Brian had brought up last time, having spoken with John Hadley. But I don't think Brian is on here tonight, and I'm not sure if he contacted John about coming. I don't see anyone, I think, from the Veterans Memorial Park.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything directly from anyone there either. So we'll, obviously on hold until we have something else to talk about. All right. I did see Richard on here. Richard, for the, if you don't mind, for the purposes of our meeting, why don't I give a quick update on everything you've been doing over there on Hurtel Road?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I sent an email regarding the Board of Selectmen's meeting tonight and asking if the board could put me on the warrant. And also, when I can expect an inspection on the two items that were on the board's requirements so that if there are any modifications or changes, I'll have ample time to, to address them. So I'm not sure when that'll take place. Also, at the selectmen's meeting, one of the selectmen mentioned something about possibility of a meeting by the selectmen. So in this letter that I sent, it stated, page 34, number 20A of the Rules and Regulations, basically states that the, the selectmen reviews the applicants prior to the commencement of the work. So that public hearing may have been done or should have been done approximately 15 years ago before the construction of the road. And then also on another note, at a meeting of July 23rd, the question of the as-built was brought up. And so I exchanged emails with Sarah a few times today, and I had an epiphany. I have, I have a receipt from Hillary saying, "This is to acknowledge receipt of the following documents by the Millville Planning Board on November 6th, 2017." So I'll be sent, I'll be scanning this and sending it to you. The four items that were sent was Millville, Mass roadway easement, certified mail receipts, white receipts. Number three was domestic return receipts, a green card. And number four was three copies and an original Mylar of the roadway acceptance plans. So that was given to the planning board or to Hillary on November 6th, 2017. So I'll be scanning that and sending it to Sarah and Pam so that we have that part of my requirement hopefully resolved. If you want, Sarah, I can reach out to Andrews Engineering tomorrow because I spoke with them today. And I don't think it'd be a big problem if they were to send me a PDF of that. So I can.
That would be excellent, Richard. That would be really helpful if you could send me an electronic copy.
Right. So right now, the planning board has in their possession three copies and an original Mylar. So I will call them tomorrow and have them forward to me a PDF of those drawings and send them to you since there were three copies. I think the three copies that were given was probably the requirement back in 2017. Not sure, but that's what was requested. And that's what I gave, that's what I gave. So I was kind of happy to have gotten that. Are there any other questions? I think when I heard the selectmen's meeting, they had just mentioned Hurtel Road. And I wanted to make sure that the three roads, Hurtel Road, Rondan Road, and a portion of Albert Drive is included on that. I would hate to see, because of a technicality, it not be put on the warrant. So I wanted to bring that up. Any, any idea when I can expect the inspection on the two items that were required by the planning board?
Sure, we can talk about that now, Richard. So at one of our earlier meetings this summer, we had decided that instead of a formal inspection, that we would conduct an informal inspection as the planning board. I know Brian and Bill have been the folks who have gone out there so far and not on the call with us today. So my question is, either Chris or Justin, if one of you would be available this week to go? Otherwise, we can reach out to Bill and Brian to see if one of them would be available to get out to do an inspection.
All right. What I can, what I will do is I will give you my cell phone number, which is 508-633-9461. So that if somebody wants to come out, I'll be glad to walk around with them. And if they have any issues, I can take a picture of those issues so I know what to address if there are any discrepancies.
Yeah, I think between, in my opinion, and I wish I could go this week, I cannot. But I think we should get out there sooner than later so we can move this forward. So.
Just in case there's some discrepancies, I'll have a chance to correct them if there are discrepancies. And then we can do, if you want, a follow-up inspection. Or I can take pictures of before and after so that everything's on file.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. Like I said, unless, if Justin or Chris, you want to set something up now, otherwise after this meeting, we'll reach out to Brian and to Bill too and see if we can figure out someone to get out there, Richard, in the next couple of days.
All right, thank you.
And then, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
Richard, I just wanted to clarify that the roadway acceptance plans that you have, that they show all three roads. So are the, is that for Hurtel, Rondan, and the portion of Albert?
It's the entire subdivision. It was modified, I think, in '07 or '08 when there was a tie-in with Carriage Estates 2 and Carriage Estates 1. It was modified. And at the time, it was Andrews Engineering that did both subdivisions. I believe OpHabe's later changed engineers. I'm sorry if we're interrupting. So the plans that were submitted in November 6th of 2017 should reflect the original modified Carriage Estate 1.
Okay, perfect.
So then, the next steps, and Sarah, please jump in if I'm messing this one up. But so the next steps would be, the inspection would be completed, and then we would move forward with the public hearing with the planning board. The, after the public hearing, we would then make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen would need to vote to accept the warrant articles for the town meeting. And all that needs to happen pretty quickly in order to meet their deadline of, I don't remember what their deadline is right now. Sarah, do you have their deadline near you?
I think that Peter might have said the 14th. So I'm going to suggest that we move to schedule this hearing so that we can have that in place to submit the warrant language. Our regular schedule unfortunately would have us meeting on September 14th. And that's pretty tight. So I'm not sure how the board would feel about switching up the days that we would normally meet. I'm trying to do the math on the legal advertising requirements also. And it's pretty tight.
Yeah, just figuring out what's the soonest we could possibly have this hearing saying that we could somehow get everything pulled off in the next day or two, with the language anyway, to have the public hearing information posted. Could we, it has to be posted for two weeks?
It has to be posted for two weeks. So if we wanted to do it the 10th, I'm not sure if we have enough time to get it advertised for the 27th.
Yeah, no, we're definitely not going to have it in time. If we can get it, yeah, if we can get it to the paper by the 20, before the 27th, we should be able to meet on the 10th or the 11th. Does that make sense?
No, because we need to run the ad. We would have to run an ad on the 27th to have a hearing on the 10th.
Gotcha.
I'm trying to pull up my legal ad deadlines here.
I was going to say, I'm feeling like, is my legal ad posting days anyway? That you could, we could probably finagle something, but maybe to be safe, we should look at.
I mean, do we know for sure that the warrant deadline is the 14th? Because the 14th is our next scheduled meeting, and we could advertise in time for that.
I think the question comes with, when is the Board of Selectmen meeting? Right? So we'd need to meet their deadlines before meeting. So I'm wondering if they've moved maybe their meeting that was going to be on the 7th to the 14th because of the holiday.
Right.
Do you think it would be possible to meet a deadline to have the hearing on the 11th?
Are you willing to meet on a Friday?
Justin, Chris, do you guys have any objection to a Friday public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, if it was earlier in the, you know, the earlier in the evening, the better.
Yeah.
We could, so unless they have changed their deadlines, the telegram requires three business days prior to, oh, this is three business days prior to the first, yeah. So we could make it for Friday.
Okay.
If I got the ad in tomorrow, then we could have it advertised by Friday.
5 o'clock, 4 o'clock?
4 works for me. I don't know, you know, it works for everybody else. If not 5 o'clock, it'll work.
Jesse, what about our Millville Cable friends?
Yeah.
Does that work for you guys?
Is it possible to do a meeting on the 11th around 4:00 or 5:00? Is it possible to do a meeting on the 11th around four or five?
It would work.
Okay. Chris said four would work for him. Justin, what works for you? Justin, can you hear us?
My bad, I muted myself. Yeah, that's fine with me. Four o'clock is better than five, so.
Four o'clock is better than five. Does that work for you, Richard?
Yeah, I just have one question. A few months ago, I had asked town clerk if I could be supplied with a copy of the public hearings that were held for Carriage Estates 2, along with the newspaper ad. Never received those, nor do I remember there ever being public hearings for street acceptance in Carriage Estates 2. I was wondering if it actually happened.
Off the top of our heads, I don't think any of us can answer that. You'd have to follow up with the town clerk.
I did. I sent her a request for that information. And what she did was she forwarded to me a website, which there was nothing in there regarding that. I will go along with whatever the board says. I'm just wondering why it was, it's required from me.
Yeah, you know, we checked earlier on this and just to make sure that we had all of our ducks in a row. And we definitely have to hold a public hearing. So if that's, if that's the question, we definitely have to.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I can see we have someone in the audience that's helping us out. Thank you again. Hopefully, again, we can meet our deadlines. I'm going to try to double check on this real quick, actually. Hang on. Yep, no. So backing up, it looks like we need to have, we need to have something by the 8th.
Can that be a joint meeting, select, a selectmen and planning board to expedite things? It may be a legal question, I'm not sure, but.
I think the issue is the advertisement itself right now.
Yeah.
The timing of that.
We're hung up on the fact that we need 14 days to advertise your public hearing. And it's, I'm pulling up my calendar again, hang on. But it's getting really tight to hold, to have it.
The absolute earliest we could have it is the 11th.
That's the earliest we could have it.
So the Board of Selectmen couldn't just put like a placeholder in there?
They have a placeholder. So they need to, they need to have time to vote on the acceptance of it. And so we need to have the public hearing before making the recommendation to Board of Selectmen. I'm trying to think through if it's possible to, because they'd be voting to include it on the warrant. So it would be, I can't see how we could, I don't see how that's possible without us having the public hearing first. And the 8th is a Tuesday. And we'd have to, we would have had to have it published tomorrow in the newspaper in order to meet the deadlines here. And Sarah, the, the public hearing, just the order of operations here, that we have to have the public hearing before the Board of Selectmen can vote?
Um, I think it would be difficult to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen without having first had the hearing. So I think we could definitely draft the warrant article and submit the warrant article. And then I guess withdraw it if, for whatever reason, things didn't get approved and you ultimately decided not to make the recommendation. I think that's the only kind of workaround that I am seeing here.
Yeah, I gotcha. All right, so I'm thinking that let's, let's hold the dates that we have that we're able to do. Because that's, that's the best that we can do. And maybe I'll reach out to Peter after this and see what kind of wiggle room we have with being able to address this particular item in a separate meeting. I think we all have the collective goal of wanting this to move forward, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right, so let's move forward with that set of directions anyway. And, you know, we have, we, like I said earlier, we have the language that we're ready to present. It's really just about the logistics at this point and getting the inspection done, which I know you've been doing the, I should say this too, but that we've been doing the little inspections along the way, that Brian's been keeping the board updated on, on everything that's been completed over at the properties as well. So I feel confident that we'll be able to do these inspections and move everything forward. Does anybody have any other questions besides how we're going to pull this off in two weeks?
No.
All right. Fun stuff. Richard, did you have any other questions? I know the other piece of this is that we need to find the, the as-built. And I'm hoping that in the meantime, that the electronic version will suffice. But then we have received that they're in the building at Town Hall someplace.
Okay, I will be scanning and sending over the receipt that I handed it over to the planning board on November 8th, 2017. What the planning board did with it after that, I have no idea. But I will reach out to Andrew's Engineer and get the PDF to Sarah.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have any other questions or other things that you're thinking we need in order to try to pull this off?
No, so if you can get in touch with Peter first thing tomorrow and see if we can nail down a date for when warrant articles are due, I will get our legal ad drafted so I can fire that off as soon as possible if we do need to have a Friday night hearing to get this in there.
Yep. Sounds good.
Sarah, are you going to, you're going to be needing a check for this advertising?
That's something of a contested issue with the board right now. Currently applicants are not required to pay the advertising fee. That's part of the application fee that you paid.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Richard. And we'll, we'll be, we'll reach out to you tomorrow at least to be able to try to schedule the inspection.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Bye now.
Thanks.
All right, Sarah, what's next?
We're moving on to miscellaneous business, I believe. So I'm not sure if we want to discuss the fee review at all. If there was a Google Drive that you all were working in, I am not sure that I was looped in on that. But I sent over a really basic matrix of some application fees for special permits, site plan review, A&Rs, the sorts of things that planning boards would typically review in surrounding towns. It's a pretty small cross-section for towns that are either kind of similar in size or that directly border Millville. And it's really just what I could quickly find online. But just as a frame of reference, because I know we had discussed whether your fees were on par with other towns, if we should be asking applicants to be responsible for those legal advertisement fees, or, you know, if maybe we should up the application fees that we're currently asking for to roll that in a little bit better, or whether we think it includes it fine just now. So I'm not sure if anyone had any comments about that or if anyone had done any other sort of research and found that you think Millville's pretty on par, that you think there are certain applications where you're a little off from other towns.
I appreciate that you put that chart together. I think it was certainly enlightening to kind of see how we stack up against everybody else, at least from, in the nearby area. I was surprised at how much lower some of the other towns that we found were. Yeah, I mean, I understand, you know, Millville's in a different place and a different situation. And I don't want to speak and make a decision or anything without hearing from Brian and Bill as well on this. But just at first glance, anyway, I'm thinking that we need to continue with the way we've been doing things and probably just roll the newspaper costs in with the fees is my
Yeah.
At first, and my initial reaction to seeing this. Did Justin and Chris, you guys have any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I mean, just looking at this quickly that Sarah did, I mean, we definitely, you know, higher in most categories for the most part. So I mean, I, I agree that I don't know that it makes sense to add additional fee in there when the fees are kind of already on the higher end anyways. We're definitely not on the lower end. So, you know, again, we want to, we want people to do business in town and, you know.
My question was going to be, do we know if the fees are cost prohibitive? And a reason why people, you know, don't come here, though?
We don't know that. And I think that some of the catalysts for having this conversation is that we were talking about the special permit fees. And the special permit fees are the same for like a bigger business as it is for a smaller person putting an apartment on their house. We don't have, you know, a ton of different varying fees in there. So for one person, it might be reasonable. And for another person, it might not be reasonable, which is I guess why sometimes we see waiver requests on some of these fees anyways to try to make it more feasible. But we don't get the waiver requests often. So this is all anecdotal. We don't have any, you know, science behind it, but.
Yeah, I will say also anecdotally, and this might be a silly question, but does the ZBA not review special permits in Millville? It seems like most of them fall to the planning board. Is that true?
My understanding.
Okay, so that's very unusual. In, in most towns, the ZBA would be the special permit granting authority. And I think that makes it a little bit easier to have those sort of tiered fees for various special permits. But I, I do think perhaps it would make sense to think about a tiered fee schedule because an accessory apartment is not the same as a marijuana cultivate. And right now, they're paying the same special permit fee.
Agreed. But again, because we're not all here, I think we should probably table this to our next meeting anyway to, to discuss a little bit further. And maybe we can kind of think further through what options we have to improve or make it better. You know, what, for example, Sarah, what would the steps be if we decided that some kind of a tiered system made sense? Or what is it that other towns have in allow, in empowering the ZBA to do those that makes it different anyway from us that, that could affect how those fees kind of get placed?
Yeah, so as far as the permitting authority goes, that would be a bylaw revision because that has to do with your use table and saying what is allowed where. It specifies who the permit granting authority is. So for all of the special permits, planning board is designated. So if the town did want to look into making the ZBA the permit granting authority for some of these larger special permit projects, that would require a zoning bylaw revision, which would be town meeting. But to update your fees, that's just updating your rules and regulations. So that's just a board vote. And then we just put the date that it was amended and that gets posted to the website.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you, Sarah. Pending applications. I know you sent one over.
Yep, we have another accessory apartment application. I have sent that to Diane to be filed officially. By my read, that is a complete application. So we could work with them to schedule a hearing. But as we've been discussing a little bit offline, Pam, my time is very short. So depending on what you want to do, I'm not sure that it makes sense for me to get in contact with that applicant to start scheduling hearings if I'm not going to be here for longer than a week when our contract expires. So I have not reached out about scheduling anything or doing the notification for that application as of yet.
Gotcha. So let's back up. And I haven't had a chance to, to fill in everyone on the board. But the current contract with CMRPC is up in a week. That was what we had originally agreed to. And I know Trish from CMRPC had reached out to me to ask what our plans were for moving forward with looking for a planner. And of course, we don't have the ability to move forward with looking for a planner right now. That being said, she mentioned that we might be able to look into planner sharing with another town. And I had responded back earlier today asking to, for a little bit more clarification on what that would look like. And, you know, unsure anyway, like hours-wise, if there's a particular amount that we need to meet in order to even think about having that discussion or not. And in the meantime, I think we need to reach out as a board, reach out to Peter again to see if he still feels the same way as he did a couple of months ago about looking for a planner. But in the meantime, we should probably look into extending a contract with CMRPC. That being said, as Sarah just mentioned, she will not be available to us. And so it will probably be a different CMRPC representative that will be helping us out. Am I getting all of that right?
Yes. And I can send you a link with a little bit more information about the shared planner services. But just the really brief overview of that is that we would, we always hear from towns when they're looking for planners. And we can kind of group towns that are geographically near each other or similar in size and issues that maybe can't hire a full-time planner with those other towns so that someone is getting more of a full 35 or 40-hour-a-week job between a few different towns. So that makes it a little bit more appealing for an applicant and also helps towns who might not be able to hire someone for six, eight hours a week. But if that person's working eight hours a week in three or four different towns, then that's a full-time job for them. So we are essentially the matchmaking service in that. And we do know of a couple other towns that are looking for planners. So if that was something that you wanted to explore, we could definitely help you look into that and see if there's anyone that would fit the bill for Millville.
I think that would make a lot of sense for us to look into. I would be curious about what other types of towns we'd be possibly matched up with, you know.
Would that be more of a, more of a permanent, if you will, position for now? And we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, a couple of months, we're back at square one again. Bring somebody back up, you know, back up to speed, you know.
Yeah, but then I'm wondering is like, how does that work? Is it just, are we still hiring like a part-time, couple of hours person who just happens to be working for all these other towns? Or is there an agreement between the towns that we need to be considering in order to, like, how does that hiring happen?
So the, I, I'm definitely going to put you in touch with our regional services program lead because I, this is not my program. It's not my expertise. But I'll put you in touch with Connor Robichon, who has done this before for a few towns. And he can definitely answer some of the more kind of nitty-gritty questions. But there's not really an agreement between the towns per se. The agreement would really be, we would essentially help you procure this person that would then have individual contracts with each of you. So we would sort of pull, you know, if you were interested and we know Boylston is looking for a So we would sort of pull, you know, if you were interested and we know Boylston is looking for a planner. So that might be a town that would be interested. Then we would sort of write up the job description or the request for qualifications and say, towns X, Y, and Z are looking to hire planners for this many hours. And then hopefully we get some good applicants and we can help all of those towns fill their positions.
Gotcha. But we would still be able to like interview the candidates and match them up with our, our town's needs. And this would just be kind of that extra, with the extra added bump we needed in order to make it attractive. Because a 10-hour-a-week position, for example, maybe isn't the most attractive to the most qualified candidate, which is the exact reason why we're in this position that we're in right now. So.
Right, 100%. Our regional services group largely does have procurements to give our towns more buying power. And that's the same sort of idea that the shared planner program applies. But, you know, with professional staff instead of, you know, a group procurement on propane or something.
Yep. Okay. Uh, yeah, I definitely want to look into doing that. Um, and I'm not sure how fast something like that would turn around. So I think in the meantime, we probably need to look into extending our CMRPC agreement, even if that means that we have to work with somebody else, as we do have at least the one application that's currently in. And, um, as I think I was sharing with you earlier, we have, um, an applicant, a special permit application that we're waiting to hear, um, from on a marijuana cultivation, um, project that we're going to need to meet with pretty quickly.
And I, I'm drafting, um, a reply to that applicant as we speak. But they have not submitted their application yet. So we've got a little bit of breathing room there.
I haven't seen anything either, but it seemed like they were, they're ready to jump. So I, I'm expecting that they will be reaching out shortly.
And on the subject of having to have another CMRPC staff, it would likely be a more junior person, which is not necessarily a bad thing because that means they're a little bit cheaper and it means we can get you a few more hours every week, probably for about the same amount. But they'd still have access, you know, to me and to the more senior planners in our office if they had questions about anything. So that is likely the road that we would go if you wanted to renew for another three months. We would probably set you up with one of our associate planners or one of our assistant planners. And we could maybe do more than the four hours a week than I've been doing.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we, when we did this, the first go around, we had a, a junior planner and, um, you know, we'll, we'll make it work. All right. Um, does anybody have any other questions, uh, for Sarah or about any of the pending applications?
No.
Just to say thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. If, uh,
You have been extremely helpful and.
Very much so.
Oh, good. Yeah, I wish I could stay on. Fall is my busiest season because I run our Green Communities program and it really kicks off in September. So.
Yeah. Uh, it's, it's really been a pleasure working with you and, uh, you know, your stuff. It's been super helpful in a time that's been kind of challenging for the rest of us.
Yeah, and I will, I'll just flag also, I think it's great that you guys have continued to meet and respond to applications. But if it does ever get to be too much during the pandemic, you're not really required to respond to any of these applications until 45 days after the state of emergency has ended. So if it does ever get really overwhelming, just remember that you have that protection under some of the executive orders that have come out. So don't, don't get too pressured by anyone who wants to push their applications through or anything. You're doing more than you have to be doing right now.
Thank you. That, that does, it does feel a little helpful. I feel like we've had like years with like nothing going on. And then the last few months, we've had an awful lot happening. So, but I appreciate your, your guidance and, and working through some of this. All right. Um, so in the meantime, uh, meetings. Our next meeting is now tentatively scheduled for the 11th at four. And then we would have had our regularly scheduled meeting planned for the 14th. So I'm going to say that we're moving the 14th to the 11th and that we should keep the 28th on the schedule for now as our next September meeting. Does that work for both of you?
Yeah, no, that works.
Okay.
I mean, if, well, I guess we could do it on the 11th. But I was going to say, you know, if like this other application comes through, like, should we hold the 14th just, just in case? To do a preliminary or? And then we can always cancel it if, if they don't?
Well,
I'm not trying to make, make more work either, but.
Yeah, no, it's kind of nice to have the date on the calendar. Why don't, that makes sense to me, Chris. We could keep the 14th, um, as a meeting planned. And, and if we can, if something happens in the next day or two, to be able to move forward with either that accessory apartment application or if anything else happens to come in in the next.
Or another planner of some sort, you know, then we're not trying to scramble to go backwards again.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that makes sense. So I'll keep those. And we'll keep the Monday meetings at 6:30 for the month of September. Does that still work?
That's perfect.
Yep, that works for me.
All right.
So just, uh, just to recap, that, um, we're going to do, uh, the Friday, September 11th at 4:00 PM.
Yep.
Going to have a placeholder for September 14th, Monday at 6:30 PM.
Yep.
And then we will have an, we will have an actual meeting on September 28th at 6:30 PM.
All right. Perfect. If there's no other questions or no other items to discuss, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I will second the motion.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.